All right, great. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. And can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we have raised the thermostat up, so it will be getting a little warmer in here soon. I see hands rubbing, so. Can we have the roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember Ann Standig?
Here.
Councilmember Rogers?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Willsheimer?
Here.
And Mayor Craig?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Make sure everybody's logged in.
I'm in.
If you weren't here at our last meeting, we're using a new electronic meeting system, so. Okay, this brings us to the orders of the day. Since we have a number of speaker cards for item number six, I was going to have that item pulled. Can I have a motion for that, please?
Do we put it in here?
Oh, well, somebody make your motion on there.
Do you have a motion?
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second? Oh, wait, do I put requests to speak? No, no, just a second.
Just a second.
Okay.
Okay, do you have a vote?
Yes, okay, so can we call for the vote, please?
Do you have a voting button?
Not yet. Come on, button.
There's motion.
Do you have a motion? Can you hit a motion button?
Wait a minute, now the motion button came up again, and now it's been seconded.
Okay.
Yeah, it's never been moved and seconded.
There we go.
Is there a voting? Okay.
Everybody, please vote.
Okay, I have all votes.
Please record the vote. Okay, great, so item six is now pulled. Do we have any written communication? Seeing none. Oh, wait a minute, we did just get something handed to us, but...
I sent a written communication.
All right, thank you very much. And now that takes us to the consent calendar, and so we have...
Have you paid any attention to communications? I received no answer, and now you're going on to the next one?
Yes, we receive the communications, and then they're filed with the city clerk.
Requesting that this be, that this meeting be postponed because...
So, ma'am, this...
When we come up with item six, you'll be allowed to come up and speak, okay? But right now, we don't take any...
Well, no, it was about the notice, not about item six.
But we don't take any public comments. So then, if you would like to come up and speak on any item that's not on the agenda, we would love to have you please come up and talk.
No, no, I'm a, I'm a written communication, I'm not an agenda item.
Okay, we don't have public testimony on written communications, I'm sorry.
Well, if you don't admit it, you have written communications.
Mr. Mifflin could clarify. So the item is related to item six, so it's appropriate for the council to consider that item and perhaps ask any questions of the author of the correspondence at the time we consider item six.
Item six, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, we don't talk about it during the actual written communications part.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, so do I have, would somebody like to make a motion for items one through five?
So moved.
No, gotta push your button. And so we have a motion, and we have a second. Can we call for the vote, please?
There's no second here.
I have a second.
My second's gone.
Yeah, I have Rogers as a second.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we call for the vote, please?
Do you have a voting screen?
No, not yet.
Okay.
There we go.
All right.
We're moving along here.
Okay, I have all votes in.
Can you record the vote, please?
Yes.
Okay, great, so item six, which is the establishment of a planned development zoning district, can we start with a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, at our last council meeting on March 20th, the council considered the adoption of an ordinance establishing a planned development zoning district, as well as a planned development permit process. That is an ordinance that will establish a new zoning district that would be available to properties of four acres or greater within, four contiguous acres or greater located within the city of Monteserino. Any development under the planned development zoning district must be consistent with the general plan. At the meeting, the council requested a few modifications to the ordinance, specifically that the planned development zoning district only be available in our residential zones, that the properties must be contiguous, and that in the event of an application for a planned development permit, that it be noticed citywide. The ordinance before you has included those amendments, and staff is recommending that the council adopt the ordinance.
Okay. So at this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment. We have a couple of speakers. The first one is Kathy Hall. Great, come on up.
I just spoke to you two weeks ago. I'm Kathy Hall from Oakhurst Drive. I've been here for 52 years, and we've never had anything close to this to disturb the Constitution as this is doing. I really feel that we should know how much we owe Stanley in lawsuits and put the parcel tax. I'm sure a lot of people would be glad to give a hundred or whatever to put it on the ballot in November, so we can pay him off and get rid of him. This is happening every two years. We have an event with him, and don't tell me this is not related. You picked out four acres. It's exactly what he has. It's very obvious that this is going to be a shoo-in for him, and once that happens, we are in big trouble. I don't know if any of you have to go down Highway 9 after 4:00. It's a nightmare. And do you know that we have to pay the money to put in a light at the hacienda? It is the responsibility of the city in which the area is located, and that's, we will have to pay that, and that is a big bill. So I just wish you would all consider the ramifications of what you're doing. Our city is going to be turned from a lovely rural area, one of the last down here around San Jose, into just an ordinary urban community, and that is sad. I think that's really sad. Once you, once you start, you can't stop. There are a lot of people who have four acres. There'll be some people who will sell to the neighbor, get out of here, and be happy to have four acres for growing pot, Airbnb, you name it, they'll do it. I've always thought our home would be marvelous for retirement home. So, maybe that's a good thing to do. But I'm really disappointed that this has to come up every two years. I just don't understand it. Thank you, I hope you'll reconsider.
Thank you. Okay, so I have one more speaker. If there's anybody else wishing to speak, if they could please bring up their speaker card.
If I talk about the, my email to you and to the city manager, does that come out of my time?
Yes, it does.
Then I'm afraid I can't, but I wish I'd heard from you, and I wish you'd paid some attention to my request, which was for the benefit of the council as well as the citizens. Okay, to begin. Monteserino has thrived as a community under a two-part protective system for its citizens. One, a general plan for the whole city, including prohibition of commercial uses, and two, a series of residential zone groupings by lot size. Now, under pressure to settle the lawsuit previous councils allowed with Mr. Stanley over the hacienda area, city officials have come up with an ill-conceived overlay scheme, which is not fit in any way with our two-way protections, the general plan commerce ban or the limited lot-size planning. City manager says it works fine for Los Gatos and Saratoga, but they both have commercial centers, and Monteserino does not. What the council will vote on tonight is this: if a person gains a large four-acre property the size of hacienda, he may request a planned development permit to develop if, for any use that he chooses. No limitations are specified. The choices can be commercial, manufacturing, care homes, agriculture, or anything else, and Ms. Hall had suggested some others. It's different in kind, it doesn't fit in, but it only substitutes for protective zoning and easily negates the anti-commerce rule of the general plan. Please note, this scheme will be on the books forever, impacting current and future development. Also, the populace is totally ignorant of what you are doing. You saw how many people came for the church, you know, 30-some? But we don't even know this is happening. I urge the council to vote against this attack on our protective base and prevent the free-for-all commercialization of the city. If you do vote for it without fully understanding its ramifications, how will you ever rein it in again? And how will you resist further increasing state pressure to dictate what we will be?
Thank you very much. And if you're new to our new electronic meeting system, the actual speaker clock is now over on the projector. We no longer use the lights up on the table. Okay, just wanted to point that out. All right, so next is Greg Hall.
I just want to say that, thank you, Marcia, that was great. I see this as a Trojan horse, and here's why I say that: it's very vague. There's not going to be anything stopping some mixed use down there, possibly, you know, like a bank branch or, you know, a small CPA office, a legal office. It's really not going to be anything on that property that will stop it, because the language isn't there. This language basically is, it's just so open, and my biggest worry is that the council really shouldn't be acting without getting this information out to people. Put it on the ballot. I mean, if this is such a strong deal, get it on the ballot. I mean, we have set zoning. Council made a mistake over on Dave's Avenue. Stanley took that mistake, and he amended his lawsuit. Okay, it's cost us money. I just think we're, we're opening the door here for something that is, we just don't understand what's going to happen. I have a feeling Stanley does. I think he's got a long-term plan, and the fact that you approved his plan, and it includes annexation as part of that approval process, I mean, you could have pulled annexation out and kept it separate, and that didn't happen. So I just think the council's overstepping its bounds, and I think you ought to slow it down and break it up, okay? Remove annexation from this. I really think we need more study on this, it's just too vague.
Okay, thank you very much. Kathy Smith?
Hi.
Hello.
So mine is more a question, and it kind of follows up on Greg's.
Okay, let me just pause you for a second. So we're going to take all the questions, and staff is writing them all down, and then they're going to respond to them all at the end, just so that if you don't get a response from us immediately, I don't want you to think we're not going to address it.
So I live on the Monteserino side, but right across the street from me is the unincorporated, and I really like unity in the neighborhood. And as I walk my dog up Dave's in the area, I hear a lot of people saying what I think are rumors, because when I research it, it looks like they're rumors, just as Greg just said, versus fact. So the question I have is if this does go through the establishment and the new place at Jack Rose, my understanding is it's not going to annex all the properties around it into Monteserino. That's the first question. From everything I've read, it says it's not. The second thing that are the rumors is that he's going to build these retail shops, and everything I've read and researched says that he cannot build that. So my question is, so I can clarify it to the neighbors as I'm walking down the street, is can he build retail shops without our permission? So those are my two questions.
Okay, thank you very much. And last name on the list is Al Eisenbach.
I just heard about this the other day, so I'm not fully informed, but I think that's the problem. I think most of the residents of Monteserino are not fully informed about this. I think if they knew, there'd be more of an uprising, you'd hear a lot more dissent. I'm afraid that ultimately you'll change the character of the community. It's just a nice, quiet residential community, and I think that this might be opening things up for development that will ultimately be unwanted. If I knew more, I'd say more. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, seeing no more speakers, I'm going to, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, you weren't on my electronic list, but yes.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Sorry about that.
Chuck, come on up.
Hey. That's why we have a paper backup.
I got you. That happens when you're in the county and not Monteserino. I'm Chuck Cappan. I live on Farragut Lane. I'm in the corner of Farragut and Highway 9. Highway 9, of course, is in that zone with the hacienda. Been there 47 years. Traffic has gotten worse. 85 came in, no traffic, 85 clogged up, and now we're getting traffic all the way to the hacienda stopped. It's hard to get out. But I've been against this annexation for about 12 years now. It started that long ago. I don't want my property being annexed, because Monteserino really can't offer me anything. And I don't want the hacienda being annexed, because that's just a foothold to get in. Once they get annexed, if that's what you people have planned, the next thing is to annex the whole area, and that's what I do not want. And I'd like to commend Marshall and also Curtis for standing by your morals and going by what you'd planned before and using the facts. Our mayor, Burton, I'm afraid you've flip-flopped a little bit back and forth, and I think you really need to look at it a little bit. Anyway, as I said, I'm not in favor of the annexation, and I never will be on that part of it. I just like to keep the property the way it is. And I'm very upset, because in February, I received a notice two days before the meeting saying that you were going to be discussing this stuff. I was going to be out of the country, and I did. I was gone for over a week, and I was unable to talk to people and get this thing going. You people are not communicating with the, with the community, and I'm really upset about that. And that may fall on the manager not getting the word out the way he should. I have no idea, but I'm really upset about that part of it. And I would like to see you people down this thing. I think the community needs to vote on whatever has to be done. I think you have that responsibility to this community, and so far, I haven't seen anything positive toward that way. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so I think that takes care of the list now, so I'd like to bring it back to council. And first of all, let's turn to staff, and I think they have a couple of questions that need to be addressed.
So first, I'll start with the annexation, which is not technically related to tonight's item, but I know that there is some confusion in the community, and the only application, the only annexation that is, will be considered is the annexation of the hacienda properties. They will in no way trigger annexation of anyone else, just the hacienda properties. It is what we call an owner-initiated annexation, which means those properties that want to develop a significant remodel or a tear-down, or in this case, a subdivision, they're required to annex into the city in order to get their project approved. That is very different than the island annexations, which many of the people may be familiar with that we talked about several years ago. Under state law, there is a process where islands of unincorporated areas can be annexed, but they have to be annexed as a whole. This is a completely different process. It is someone who wants to redevelop their property, and in order to do so, they would have to annex into the city limits. So only the hacienda property is being considered for annexation.
Okay.
The other issue that we heard tonight, and we heard it at the last meeting as well, is this idea that this PD zoning district will somehow change the character of Monteserino. This planned development zoning district is a planning tool. It does not in any way change your general plan, and it does not in any way allow any uses that are not allowed under our general plan. So currently, the city of Monteserino does not allow commercial uses. Adopting this ordinance tonight will not change that. Any development under a planned development zoning district has to be consistent with your general plan. So if your property is zoned R-144, you can apply for a planned development zoning district, which may allow you to modify heights or setbacks, but your density has to stay the same. If you're an R-120 or an R-18, that's the same rules. If you're a subdivision, you're multi-family housing, you still have to be a multi-family housing project. It in no way allows commercial. So the hacienda site, through the application process and the public hearing process, there's nothing in that application that would allow commercial uses on the site. Nothing in this zoning ordinance that you're considering tonight will allow commercial uses in the city of Monteserino.
Okay.
One other issue that we heard tonight was about a traffic light. Staff has just started analyzing the hacienda application. That will include a traffic study. If a traffic signal is warranted at that location, then that would be the responsibility of the property owner, not the city. So the city would not be responsible to pay for a traffic signal if one is required. We did do an environmental impact report when the hacienda site was rezoned several years ago. At that time, no traffic mitigation measures were required. If this application were to require some traffic mitigation measures, that would be wholly the responsibility of the property owner.
And then I just want to speak briefly to the public outreach and communication. Today, the city launched a webpage devoted to this project. It is filled with information, general information about the proposal, information about the specific applications. It also has information on what's upcoming. It has the meeting dates. In some cases, it's estimates, because they've not been set yet. It also has a frequently asked questions section, so the, so the community and the council knows. We, that webpage went up today so that we could provide a portal for anyone in the public to get a considerable amount of application, or information about the application. The reason why it did not go up until today is because we received the application, but staff needed time to review it to be sure that we had the major components and all the pieces that we could say that it was a valid and an application that we could accept and consider to be relatively complete. So that has gone up today. As I mentioned earlier during the goal setting, we will be sending out a post on Nextdoor. So if you're not on Nextdoor, I highly recommend you join Nextdoor. But we will also, if we have your email address, we'll be sending it out to all of the persons on our general interest email address with the link to the webpage. If you go to monteserino.org, there's a button on the very first page that says hacienda property, housing, proposed housing development. You click on there, and it will take you to an enormous amount of information. So staff is endeavoring to do everything possible to be sure the community and the council is aware of all the aspects of the application. And I always encourage, as I've been doing this for several decades, any person in the public, if you ever have any questions about any aspect of anything that the city is engaged in, we are here five days a week. You can certainly stop in, say hello. More than, I'm usually available to talk to people. You can also review any application materials that we have while you're here, and we can certainly make copies for you if you have interest in copies. So we, we are at the ready to assist you in any way to help educate and inform.
Okay, thank you. Does any council member have a question for staff? Councilmember Turner?
Request to speak.
Request to speak. There we go, now we got one.
Is, is a church or a school considered commercial?
They are not considered commercial under our zoning district. They would only be allowed in our public zoning, so that would be the City Hall site, the Dave's Avenue School site, and the First Baptist Church site are only sites designated for public.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Ann Standig?
Yeah, I think I'm looking at the ordinance.
Yeah.
I appreciate the inclusion of some of the changes that we talked about at the last meeting, but I've got a couple more. With respect to the general plan that we, that you mentioned and the concept of the Trojan horse, the city council has the authority to amend and modify the general plan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if the city, so if this ordinance that is before us this evening was ultimately passed, and a sufficient majority of the city council moved to amend the general plan to allow for commercial use, it's certainly within the realm of possibility that this ordinance could be used for the purpose of coming up with a commercial plan of some sort?
It could be used, but if you amended your general plan to allow commercial uses, you would also create a commercial zoning district, and a plan could be submitted consistent with your commercial zoning district. This zoning district in itself, all it does is it allows you to vary from the standards of your existing zoning districts. So this, this by itself wouldn't allow you to have commercial uses. You would have to have a general plan amendment that allowed commercial uses, and you would have to have a corresponding commercial zoning district, and this, the owner that wanted to apply for this, their property would also have to be zoned commercial.
So they, so, but all those, all those items are, those are all possibilities?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Now, also with respect to the ordinance itself, the ordinance does not provide for any modified zoning from what currently exists today. Is that correct?
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't provide for any modifications from the general plan land use designation, commercial or residential, but it does permit someone to say, we'd like a different setback, we'd like a different height limit, we'd like a different, you know, lot coverage or open space requirements.
What about density, however, though?
No, the density is designated by your general plan and the zoning.
There's nothing in our general plan that permits the type of density that we've seen in the application.
So Mr. Stanley's application also will include, includes a general plan amendment to modify our existing RM zoning, which currently is three units per acre. It would modify, his request is to modify that to nine units per acre.
Another question, on the second page, I guess it's section one, the section 1C. It says the PD district can only be applied to a site of at least four contiguous gross acres in size. And currently, there's a for-sale sign on the property that appears to be right on the corner of Highway 9 and Farragut, which is right, I believe that's contiguous to the hacienda property?
I don't believe so. Farragut is farther down. Right? Yeah, yeah.
But it's not for sale.
It's not contiguous, it's not contiguous to, it's not next door to hacienda. There's properties in between.
No, it's ten, ten houses. Okay, all right. But if some, but if someone was, there's no reason why this particular ordinance wouldn't apply to like five or six acres?
Right, it just has to be at least four.
So it is possible that in certain neighborhoods, if people got together and provided, and came up with a plan to develop their particular streets or lots in such a manner that this ordinance would be applicable?
It could be, but again, any development proposed would have to be consistent with your general plan. So if your general plan designation is R-144, your PD would have to be consistent with R-144.
And ultimately, obviously, the plans themselves, the application and all the specifics that we've talked about, setbacks, et cetera, et cetera, would all have to be ultimately approved by council.
Correct.
So this is, this sort of opens the, opens the door for the opportunity, at least, for that type of development.
It would open that opportunity, and then it would be up to the council solely in its discretion. You have no obligation to approve a planned development district or to amend a general plan or do anything like that.
Okay, and if we ultimately voted down the Stanley proposal, we would be back in court with the litigation?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay. And at this time, I will
entertain motions, or if any council members would like to make a comment. And I have a motion to approve item number six. And we have a second. Can we call for the vote, please? Not yet. There it is. It's coming over the internet now.
I have all the votes in.
Okay, thank you. Can you record the vote, please?
Yes, there it is.
Okay, so the motion passes three to two. Okay, so seeing that we don't have any public hearings, or any unfinished business, or any new business, I'm going to move to the committee and commission reports. And I think we started on the right the last time, and so we'll start with council member Rogers.
I have no, nothing to report.
Okay, council member Ant standing?
Nothing to report.
Okay, council member Wolsheimer?
Nothing to report.
Okay, and council member Turner?
I do have one thing. The West Valley sanitation district is going to hold a public hearing, May 9th, on raising the fees for your sanitation, and it's going to be in the Campbell City Hall.
Okay, thank you very much. And I don't have anything of great note, but I do want to mention that for the month of April, if you have any library fines at the Santa Clara County Library, you can bring some food, bring a can of food, and they will absolve you of any fines, lost book fees, or any other fees that you have incurred over time at the library, so. And now I would like to move on to council member comments. Nope, nope. Okay, and then that takes us to the city manager report.
I think given what we just went through with the council goal setting, I don't think I really have anything else to add at the moment.
Okay, very good. Well, then at that, I will-